Director to order, we'll start with the flag salute among the silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
This is Donna Hay.
I haven't seen her, I text her, but I still want to see. Mr. Allen.
Present.
Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Coke. Ms. Lynch.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Probert.
Here.
Mrs. Smith, here. Mr. Strauss.
Here.
Seven members present. Our presentation this evening is on our CTC work experience. We're going to turn it over to Mr. Lynch and Miss Killinger.
Thank you. Tonight, we're going to give you a overview and some information about our school work programs through the Period Tech Center. And again, thank you for leaving us to come in again last time. Oh, tonight's School to Work. And I'm going to hand it over to Mrs. Killinger.
We're gonna, so are you working on that key? I'm gonna try to get this to him.
Oh, to the rescue.
Always. Particular area. Well, is that camera better? Well, we're sharing, so.
Yeah, it's good. You're good.
Okay.
Bike's good.
So, thank you for having me today. So, we're going to talk a little bit about our work experience programs and what's been going on with that this school year. So. So, we have four different types of work experience within the School to Work programs. The first one is diversified occupations, and we call that DO. And DO is set up for students that would like to enter the workforce and have some skills within an area that we don't necessarily have a CTE program currently for within our district. So, that could be something like accounting or business management. It's also for students that maybe weren't able to get into a CTE program that we do have because of already high enrollment, and they weren't able to get into that program. We also have what's called the Capstone Cooperative Education Program, which is also known as COOP. And that is an extension of our CTE programs. So, for example, if we have a student that is in ag mechanization, we would maybe put a student out, maybe working on a farm or working with machinery of some sort. So, or maybe even in the drafting and design field. So, it's really an extension. Once they've reached a level of their duties and task sheet, which is called the Program of Study within that program, that they would continue to learn some of those skilled trades actually on the job. And then we have internships, which consist of usually a six-week internship where they go out, they work with the employer to learn different skills. This is not a paid internship, whereas DO and COOP are actually a paid work experience. Internships usually last somewhere around 40 to 45 hours. And then we have job shadowing, which is anywhere from four to six hours. And really, it is what it says it is. The student is really just observing the employer and the skills that they're doing or the tasks that they're doing that day, and just to sort of get acclimated in what that career might be all about. So, currently, we have decent enrollment for this year. So, we have 19 students out right now on DO, 11 on COOP, internships, we have eight, and we don't have any job shadows this year. So, our numbers are pretty good considering the type of year that we have encountered. So, you'll see that in parentheses, I have last year's numbers. So, we are right where we were last year with DO, which is pretty good. We really would have liked to have had more, but given the circumstances, it is what it is, and I think that's pretty good for this year. Usually, and right now, we're actually going to be starting this month. We're going to go out and we're going to touch base with our juniors, which is what we had anticipated on doing last year to get those juniors ready for their senior year and, you know, get them signed up and the paperwork done so they're ready to go day one of their senior year. So, we didn't have that opportunity last year, so we really hit the ground running when school came back in session this year. And we tried to reach out to those seniors and try and get them enrolled in the program. And like I said, didn't do too bad. So, actually, our numbers were actually up in internships. So, that was, that was a plus for us this year. So, I thought it'd be a good idea to post all of our community partnerships right now. And we are at, I think it's 50, I think we hit 50 right on the dot. And I just added some just currently this week. So, we finally got the last McDonald's, although I still am game in for Milesboro McDonald's, but we've got Lock Haven, Lamar, and McCall Hattan. So, I just added Lock Haven just this week to our list. So, that is really, to me, I think that that's an outstanding list of partnerships that we have. That was from last year and this year. So, we, unfortunately, I do want to point out, we had PennDOT last year. This year, due to COVID, we weren't able to place any students at PennDOT. But I've been in contact with the gentleman from there, and we are aiming for next year. They're hoping that the restrictions will loosen up and we'll be able to get some kiddos there. So, but we have had other great partners this year, and some of which I will introduce you to, and they're going to speak about the program, so. So, my guest speakers tonight, I will introduce them. And so, we have Nishae Fletcher. She'll speak first. And we have, and she is the Recruitment and Retention Coordinator at Trucklight. And then we have Tim Hazelton, the Plant Manager at Trucklight. That has just been, within the last probably, what, two months, I believe, a partnership that we have formed with Trucklight, and it's just been great. And then we have Doug Spatafor from L H U. And I have three students here to talk about their experience, because I can sit up here and talk to you till I'm blue in the face and tell you how great I think the program is, but whenever it comes down to it, ultimately, it's about the students and how they're benefiting from the program. So, and that would be Donovan Page, Michael Hauser, and Lance Bowman. So, Nishae, if you'd like to one up and speak. Sure, I think it moves. Okay, Tim, if you'd like to come up too, feel free, Donovan, because you're going to represent the student portion of Trucklight.
So, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. As Stacy, Daisy stated, my name is Nishae Fletcher, and I work with Trucklight as a retention and recruitment coordinator. And I've been working with Daisy on rolling out the School to Work program. We initially had started with five. We had two that decided to exit the School to Work program, but they are still employed with us at Trucklight. And we have another student that has just started, and we will have another one starting next week. So, now that we've streamlined the process and we have all of those things in place, that it's a very easy process. Once I hear that I have a candidate that is interested in School to Work, we can go from that to going through the process very quickly and getting them in the plan working. So, it has been going very well. We have been getting positive feedback on all of the students. We haven't had a single student that has had behavioral problems or any type of problem that would need counseling. They're picking up the, the things that they have to do on a daily basis very quickly. They're outperforming even some of our seasoned employees. So, they're getting a lot of, a lot of inquiries, like, and people that are getting, they're getting attention as far as that goes. So, it is going very well. We do have some further opportunities that we also wanted to let you know about, and that is also for after-school. So, if we have students that maybe don't qualify for that School to Work, or maybe they just don't want to leave school early and they still want to have a job. So, we have a lot of different opportunities. We're being very flexible with scheduling. So, we can also accommodate those students as well.
I'm Tim Hazelton, I'm the Plant Manager at Trucklight. We're just really excited to partner with the school and the students and give them opportunities to learn what the world's like, you know, whether that's to learn whether they don't want to do that kind of work or move on to college or whatever, whatever they want to do. So, we're really being flexible. We're trying to work part-time shifts, opening up our second shift hours, which hopefully work for the school for mostly the folks. I'm just really excited. She said everything excellent, so I don't have a whole lot to add, but she said, she's really the brains behind the operation. I just tell her how many people we do. We have a lot of openings. We're currently about 67 people short in fact. So, we have lots of openings. Our second shift can handle about 40, 40 students right now. So, we're trying to really kind of coordinate that so that's just students on that shift. So, we don't have a lot of other adults interacting with them. So, we try to keep that group together and kind of keep some of the other folks away from them that we need to, but just kind of give the parents some peace of mind that their kids are just around other school kid, kid age, age kids. So, that's kind of what our. I want to turn it over to Donovan, let him explain how he's, how he's going.
Hello, I'm Donovan Page. I work the first shift in Trucklight. It's in the morning, that's a 6:00 to 11:00. And I was one of the first kids to start at the harness. And it works extremely well for me. It's in the morning. Just a little bit later, around 11:30, I get in the school, do my English. And I actually have my ag mechanics class still open, which usually would be taken out, but I can still continue on that career path. At work, it's going extremely well for me. We have a lot of people at Trucklight that will really help us, mentor us, teach us how to do things right, teach us how to correct our mistakes, let us know how to operate the molds that we're doing, or like I do, I operate things.
Thank you. I just want to sort of elaborate a little bit on Donovan's sort of situation. He was fortunate enough to be able to keep his CTE program and still go out to work. It doesn't always happen like that, because usually, the work experience actually takes the place of the CTE program to expand on, on those skills. But he was one of the fortunate kids where he had enough room in his schedule. And Trucklight has been amazing. I, Nishae and I worked for probably about a week trying to really tweak the kids' schedules so we could give them as many hours as we could get them, but yet, it still worked for their schedule here at school. They've been super with that with us. But yeah, Donovan was one of those fortunate kiddos that got to keep the CTE program, still get his graduation requirements and his academics, and be able to go out to work. Although, he's going to work at 6:00 AM, so he's a early riser, but that's what he wanted to do, so I think that's fantastic.
Is it easier for the schedule to work with situations like this because of the semester block?
Yes, I, I think that it has been. Yeah.
And then as a student who's working half-day and at school half-day on the semester block schedule, you only have two classes to concern yourself with as a part-time student, as opposed to four here at law.
Yeah, and help with the block schedule as well, because you can set more classes, get your requirements done quicker. And that way, in your senior year, you have opportunities to work in the morning and only have two classes to do. Well, I only have one class to do, but I choose to do the ag mechanics.
That's great.
Got a question. Is there anything that you, as a student, feel like we could be adding here with our CTC program that would benefit you? And this goes where you also, that would benefit the kids needing here to go to work at Trucklight? Is there any kind of machine reader or something like that, that, I'm not asking for donations, but if you had an extra machine or something along that line that would help, if we had it here, that could teach the kids just an idea of what's going on? I mean, something like that, is there a benefit to that? I mean, do you feel like there's something we could have had here that would have helped you, paired you more, or not necessarily?
I guess I'm a special case with me, and I already had, I believe it's now four jobs, four different ones. I had construction, fast food, and I was a cleaner before I came to Trucklight. Okay. Um, and those nonetheless, like, really helped me prepare, but I was just in workforce already. And at Trucklight, they do a really great job on just having you there and teaching you what you have to do. And they won't leave you alone with a, you know, mold if you don't understand it. They really sit there, talking through it, show you how to do it. Like, in the beginning, for me, I ran what are called old molds in the beginning. That's very easy. That's usually what new employees start out with. And they show you how to run it, how the machine works, and then they watch you run some. And they go from there based on how low you're doing. That also worked out for my other coworkers, the other two that worked with me. They said the same thing. We have really good people to show us how to run stuff, really explain to us what we need to do.
Thank you.
So, as far as what we can do to help prep kids, students, should say that, students, rulers, reading rulers is a big thing. In the arts department, everything is measured in inches and down to less than 30 seconds of inches. Typically, what we struggle with, the adults come in and they ask, oh, we need the 16 to 30 seconds on rulers. That's really the only thing to really prep for this type of work.
Yeah, ag mechanic class.
Can't get a machine out of here. Try.
Yeah, but the ag mechanic class really helpful fact, because we do, we do stuff like that. So, that would be the one thing that helped me with the Trucklight.
Thank you.
Um, Doug, would you like to talk? Thank you. So, Doug has actually one of our interns this year. So, and I know that's been going very well every time I've been on site, because Doug seems to be very pleased. I was like, we need to come.
No, thank you. Happy to be here, so I appreciate the opportunity. My name's Doug Spatafor, and I'm currently the Senior Director of Athletic Communications and Marketing at Lock Haven University. And Trevor Adair is the student who's been working with me. And kudos to everybody. I mean, he's a, he's a fantastic ambassador for all of you. So, I hope, I mean, he's done a phenomenal job from day one and really enjoyed having him. But I think it's a, it shows the type of education he's getting, and I think it's a feather in the cap of the district. So, kudos to everybody. We've never had a high school intern at the university under, under me since I've been there. So, I was really excited to give it a shot. I've known Trevor a little bit, so we were familiar with, with his family. He's done a heck of a job. He really has. And I think the most important thing I can say is, we needed some help this year. You know, the university, majority of the classes are remote. I didn't have my typical staff around. My student workers, a lot of them were home. A lot of my interns were home for the semester. So, he not only came in and, I think, learned stuff and had some fun, he's helped us. And I mean that from day one. He's come in and he rolls his sleeves up and just does a great job. I know he has a little bit of an interest in potentially going into this field in the future. So, I was excited about that and excited about to give him that opportunity. But again, just a phenomenally young man. He's helped us, you know, my position at the university, we promote and publicize the athletic programs, and it's a, it's a small operation at Lock Haven. It's really me and, and student workers. So, it's everything from running a website, keeping stats, social media, and he's done some of that stuff. I mean, I'm super impressed with his writing ability. So, again, I think that's a kudos to, to the school, to the teachers. I couldn't believe how well he could write from the get-go. And I think that's something that kind of blew me away a little bit early on, was just how, how great he was at that. But he's done a little bit of everything. I think for him, what's really been exciting is sports have started back at the university over the last couple of months. So, he's been able to see what we do on game day. I think in the fall, when he started, you know, some of the stuff maybe wasn't as exciting for him. You know, we're sitting in the office and tweeting about games that happened years ago or, or things that happened in the past. But now he gets to see it firsthand. He's come to some softball games. He's been to a few baseball games. And really, like I said, I mean, he's been, he's been an asset to my team. It's been an honor to have him, and I really hope that we can continue the partnership moving forward. I think it's, you know, with the university having such an important part in this community, I hope that we can continue it. And I would love to have another student in the future.
Michael. Michael Hauser is one of my diversified occupations students also, and he can tell you where he's been working.
Yeah, so, well, I've been working with Mrs. Killinger since last year. I was supposed to go on an internship, and the day that I was supposed to meet with her is whenever we got the text saying that school had to shut down for two weeks. And then that internship did not happen. And then in the summertime, we're writing emails back and forth, getting diversified occupation set up. So, I'm currently working at the Comfort State Holiday Pennsylvania with HF Health Corporation. So, basically, what I do on the daily is, hand the front desk, check people in, check people out, process credit cards, transfer online reservations to the system, things like that, and then communicate with the rest of the staff, like, especially the housekeeping maintenance, keep up with the room standards, things like that. And then with that, I'm also working with our owner of other properties, state-owned apartment buildings, doing some website design, and then just basically working their online presence with them. A lot of courses at the high school, I chose basically diversified occupations just due to the fact that I've taken every business course that there was to offer. And I figured my senior year, I'm not going to sit in a lot of classes I don't want, don't want to be bored in. I'd rather go out and actually work and do something that I enjoy. Yeah, Mrs. Killinger has been alongside the whole time, and yeah, it's a really good program. I'd recommend anybody do it. Yeah. And after my school graduation, I plan to attend the South Coast full of business technology for business administration, management, and marketing. And then hopefully, you've got my dream somewhere, either here or hopefully somewhere else.
Yeah. You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lance. Lance Bowman. He is a cooperative education student in COOP, and he is actually in Mr. Fred Roy's drafting and design course.
Good evening, everybody. It's 7:37. My name is Lance Bowman. I'm employed with my father's estimation company, Boomax Estimation Painting Concrete, as an estimator for the COOP program. So, on a daily basis, I handle all our price quotes and all our bidding, as well as I help to manage the jobs when they first get started. So, order the necessary materials, make sure the crews are prepared, that the equipment they need is available to them. COOP program has really been a great asset to me. It's allowed me to gain the necessary experience before I go off to college. I plan to attend either Penn State University or Colorado School of Mines in Golden, Colorado. And I intend to major in civil engineering with a possible minor in business.
Thank you. I have to tell you a story about Lance. I did, the last time that I went to do a site visit, I had walked in and just I was sitting at the front desk. And of course, I'm walking like, oh, where's Lance? He's like, oh, he's on the phone over here in the center of office. And all of a sudden, I hear Lance talking, and he was really taking charge of getting those prices and those estimates. And I said, who is that? I said, he really sounds like he knows what he's doing. He says, he can stand the business, and he, he gets those bids done, he gets us the prices we need. And I, it was, it was just the perfect situation to be able to observe and hear the student in action, talking on the phone like that, and doing what he was meant to do and why he was there. So, I think that was fabulous. That was the last time I was there, and I just, I thought it was great, so, yeah. Thank you, everybody, for speaking tonight. I appreciate it.
So, I just want to mention that the success of these programs would not be possible without Kurt Lynch and Daisy Killinger, and that long hours they put into not only working with the students, but also members of our community and spreading the word that these opportunities exist for kids. I, I think that hearing the students speak firsthand about their experiences makes me happy and know that they're proud to be part of our school district and that they are gaining those, those skills that they need. And just as a reminder for our board and also those here in, in our audience as well, our comprehensive plan that we developed exactly two years ago in April was the, the vision being preparing citizens for the challenges and opportunities of the future. This is a classic example of that. And our mission along those lines was to, we're committed to developing lifelong learners who are adaptable, resilient, productive, and of high moral character. And I don't know of any other experiences that could culminate your high school career without, that would exemplify that any, any more perfectly than these opportunities that we're giving kids. And one of our goals that we set two years ago was to expand the number of partnerships, the community partnerships that we have. And so, although we're going to be moving into evaluating our comp plan very soon, I think this is a really nice benchmark to see that there are at least over 50 businesses participating with us now. Where would you say we were two years ago with the number of partnerships?
Yeah, maybe, maybe 12, maybe a dozen, maybe?
Maybe. Yeah, so, kudos to you. I know that you spent a lot of time at the Economic Partnership Picnics and trying to get our business cards out there and, and let people know about this program. So, thank you so much for your hard work, and thank you, those who came to share your experience about how this program has been successful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on. We have no one signed up to speak this evening from the public. So, we will move on to our superintendent's report.
Thank you. On March 27th, we held a building and surplus auction at Dickey Elementary School. We received $80,000 for the sale of the Dickey Elementary building, and approximately $36,000 in surplus was also sold on that day. We don't have final numbers for the board yet, but I'm sure that you'll see those deposits and, and report in the future. I do want to thank the many board members who also attended the auction. Susan Blesch and Rob Pacella for their work on this project. And a special shout-out to Rhonda Phillips and her entire crew for all the hard work that they did over the past six months in preparation for this auction to occur. Things came out of every nook and cranny of Central Mountain Middle School. We've started cleaning out Bucktail High School. These renovation projects have really forced more stuff to just keep coming out that has been stored over, over a number of decades. So, we feel that it was pretty successful in getting things cleaned out. And we did make sure there was a lot of effort into folks getting down to Dickey and making sure that things that were on, you know, that were being ready for auction were not something that we needed or that somebody else needed. So, I know there was a lot of effort put into that as well. Later in the agenda, you're seeing a business item related to a contract with Final Site. That's a website, a web design vendor. The new website that we're looking to launch on or about July 1, along with a communication app and a new district logo are all part of the strategies for addressing our comp plan, specifically Goals Four and Five regarding strong relationships with families and communities, as well as accessible and transparent communication. Ultimately, I'm working with our admin team now to develop a formal communication plan for the board to, to look at and see where it would be more of a long-term communication plan. But these are some of the initial steps that we need to take in order to prepare to launch that new site. I think there's been an awful lot of feedback provided to me about our current website, and it has not been positive. So, this is a step, I think, believed in the right direction. And then finally, just to keep the board up to speed, as well as our community on the transparency of the S R funding, Susan Blesch, our business manager, and I, along with our administrative team, are continuing to look at how we believe we can best effectively use this one-time stimulus money. We've been attending seminars and presentations, making sure that we have all of the best information that we can have. I've been collaborating with other superintendents on how they plan to strategically use these funds. And I think, again, it's a, it's a huge caution. This is one-time money. This is not money that's going to be here forever. It's, this hasn't happened maybe, what, 10 years ago, but not to the degree of, of this. So, we're putting this money into six different buckets, if you will, where more than 50% of it will be spent on instructional needs and about 25% being spent on safety needs. We are looking with our facility committee to spend some of those dollars on air quality, as well as the community feeding program. And we do have to give some allocation to our non-pubs. And the other chunk will be to technology. We purchased a whole lot of technology equipment in a short period of time, and those things do not have eternal lifespans. So, we believe that we'll be coming forward to the board with some ideas and plans, how to earmark some funds for future use. As we move through this process, we'll continue to keep you and the entire public aware of how this public, how these public dollars are being spent. aware of how this public, how these public dollars are being spent.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Onto committee reports, curricular, co-curricular. Eric, are you co-curricular, curricular?
Yeah, I'm here. Sorry, I was on a bathroom break. All right, so we had a short meeting on March 16th and we had a few agenda items. Under curricular, we got an update on the smart boards getting rolled out of the classrooms and got an update from Megan and that's going well. On the co-curricular side, we discussed a co-op agreement with the Clay Target League Agreement that we, that we discussed in the past and a possibility of involving Bucktail students next year. Mr. Hayfley and Mr. Hall were working on that. There was all some, some information from the superintendent and, you know, we're looking at adding some more money back in to the athletics budget. I think in the past, when things weren't going as well, we really restricted that budget and basic needs such as practice equipment, tennis balls, basic things they need for sports weren't getting purchased. So we're going to add some money back into that. In the past, we looked at spending at our athletics program compared to other school districts. And, you know, we spend very low amount of money on sports compared to neighboring districts. So we're, we're going to try to get back in line and get the basic needs for the kids. And that's about all we had.
Thank you. Jeff, facilities?
Well, facilities met two days ago on Tuesday of this week. And we had a pretty jam-packed agenda this week. As opposed to last month, we didn't meet at all. But we first had a presentation on the cafeteria upgrades, improvements at both Central Mountain High School and Bucktail High School. This project has been kind of ongoing here, the development of it with the, a lot of input from students in both buildings. It was kind of spearheaded with them in mind, along with Sharon Berger, the head of the food service department. She is using some of, well, most of what these improvements that cafeteria will be paid for by the food service monies. And it'll be a little bit from the general fund for some of the demo and so on, painting and so on. The, I just want to point out to the, to the whole board, a few of us had a chance to see the presentation that, of the things that they are planning to do. And there are just some, some really great improvements in both cafeterias. And I know that next week, the company that's doing all the design work on it, I think it's going to give us the whole board a presentation. But there are a lot of exciting things happening and being planned. And I think the formal bid process will move forward here over the next month or two. And I think once you see it next, next week, you'll be very pleased that both schools have a really nice improvement. Central Mountain kind of gives you the design there, kind of gives you the feeling of, of a college eating area cafeteria. And the Bucktail has done a really nice job of opening up the serving area and have some, some large, higher level tables with charging ports in them and for both cafeterias. Without going into a whole lot of detail, it's just, it's been very well done. We're, we're very excited about, about the process. Couple of students from each building presented a little bit to us at the facilities committee meeting. They've been doing a great job of getting input from a lot of the students and most of what they said are just going to be incorporated. From there, we had, we then went on to presentation, Crabtree Roar Ball, about the Bucktail, the canopies and the gym entrance, the gym entrance and the main entrance, the signage and so on, and what they're going to do with the entire facade of the building and their plans. Then they showed us some drawings of what was going to, what it was going to look like. And it's really, we were very, very pleased with that. They recommend that, that we move ahead with the drawings or with the project as it, as it was presented. And the committee is recommending go ahead, also do that. Third presentation we had then following that was by McClure about the Bucktail project that they, they have with their end of it with the energy savings and so on. We did, you'll see, if you look at the attachment later on in the agenda, there's some additional, I think it was $17,000 of monies were moved from one thing, one area to the other to add and deduct some things for, for the Bucktail project. And then as, as Dr. Mark mentioned here a little bit ago, they, we are going to, it would use some of the S R funds to improve the air quality, do some HVAC work in the gym and cafeteria area. And it's not just air conditioning, it's, it's really doing the entire systems over up there which really need it done because they are aging and they need to be replaced. So this is a good opportunity to use some of those funds to do that.
Yeah, when, when we were working originally on the Bucktail project, we really stuck to the air conditioning in the classrooms. And we're not thinking about expanding because of the cost. And we said, boy, if, if we had the money, that would be a nice thing to do. But we didn't expect that we would have the money. And now we have some S R funds with allowable expenditure in there that would also save us by doing this project now while we have the roof project going on, would actually save us quite a bit of money in the out years from replacing the old HVAC systems, which are at end of life as well, or the old heating system.
Right. So it's, you know, I, I don't, I want everybody to understand it's not just air conditioning. It's the entire heating and cooling systems that we're replacing. And it is, it was just very, very fortunate that we were able to get these funds to do that. From there, we also talked about some improvements that we were going to use some, I believe, some of the funds from the existing, or, and your plan monies to do some things also you'll see on tonight's agenda. The, the Bucktail football field, goalposts up there are not, just not up to par right now. They're, they're old. They also need to be replaced with the actual ones that are official ones that
What does it mean, regulation?
The ones that are regulation that had curve and the one post instead of the old H, H now. So we're recommending that, that be done. Also, there's a stormwater drainage problem up there. There's a, there's a bid on there for that on tonight's agenda as well. And also the wrestling mats in the wrestling room. These, these are not the mats used for the, for the actual wrestling matches. These are ones that are used for, here in the building at Central Mountain. And they've reached their end of life as well and they can't be reconditioned any longer. So we are going to replace those. So there's also quote in there for that. And last couple of things, there was a request from Woodward Township to asking that we give them a 24 easement for, to develop a road near their township building. And was requested, we discussed a little bit and we weren't sure. You know, they were just asking, we would just give them a piece of land and that they would develop it and go fencing and so on. Well, we weren't sure exactly how we wanted to approach that yet. So we're going to ask David Lindsay for some, some information on that. That's still, what would be the best, best route to go with that and then take that up at the next meeting. And last but not least, there was a, an item that was added here. We're having some problems. We need some repairs done on the track here at Central Mountain. And it was just one of those things that we, we have to do some patching here because it is track season. And so they need to do that for, obviously for safety reasons and so on. So there will also be information on there as far as the cost of that. So it's a lot of, a lot of information this time, but it was a, it was a very productive meeting. Got a lot done. I think we're ready to move ahead with a lot of these projects. And I'm very excited about it. So that's it.
I have a question. Jeff, I was at the meeting, but then I had to leave for work. So I didn't get a chance to ask a question. I guess I just have one. It's just back in my mind trying to think. With McClure, do we know offhand right now that we were able to look at from September till now? Are we on schedule to save, to really truly receive the savings that they promised us? With the energy use at Central Mountain, the high school, middle school? I mean, do we know? Right? That's probably more of a Rob or Susan question, but.
Yeah, as far as I know, I think.
Elizabeth, I think, asked that same question at the meeting, but Susan, would you want to take that one?
Yes, Alyssa and I spoke about this. If the estimates for the project, I was trying to find the email she just sent me. The measurement and verification reports take about six months to compile based on the current COVID backlogs upon the completion of the construction year. So for the first phase energy project, the construction year window was June 2020 to May of 21. Therefore, we should have a construction year measurement and verification end of year, end of this year, early next. Does that make sense?
No, go ahead, Susan.
Yeah, did that, did you hear all of that? So probably end of 21, early 22.
Okay, so the end of the calendar year, not school year, correct?
Yes, because the construction window was June 20 to May of 21 and then you need six months.
Okay. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, even if those targets aren't met, then McClure or some guarantor that they have is then responsible for making up the savings that we didn't get because there's a guaranteed Energy Savings Act ESCO project.
Correct. They would, they would actually issue us a check for the difference.
Yeah, so we can't lose.
Right, it's a, it's a guarantee.
It's a good game to play. The win wins.
But I will say the district didn't lose. You have to go back a ways. Gary Pack was here. The district didn't lose. If you want to talk to, Jesus, I won't call my name now. I will tell you later who to talk to. He went through it and experienced it. We did not get energy savings money because there was a clause in the contract that totally cut everybody off guard and nobody was aware of it. It required the lights to be on for 20 hours a day. And since we did not keep the lights over 20 hours a day, McClure was able to not pay us the savings for 10 years. This is from a former Keystone Central employee that was in charge of that. So it does, I do have a little concern about wanting to know where that energy money is now because we have an agenda tonight to prove the Bucktail ESCO, another $4 million. And we still don't know whether, are we on pace to save that money? Like I would almost wonder, Susan or Rob, if we could look at the bills from September through now, from last year and this year, to see if we actually see an energy savings. There's no reason to assume that we shouldn't be, based upon the numbers that they told us and everything they said, we should actually see it decline and the energy use, right?
I, I would think that any numbers that we'd be looking at for, for any time over the past year till now is going to be totally distorted.
Right, yeah. An idea, September and October, we were at school.
Right, but that's data that's really, really hard.
And I just, I just worry, I just worry that it will certainly not be a typical, a typical school year by any means, but. So what we, kind of difficult. And my only other question is, Rob, you can answer this one, I'm sure. Was the Bucktail air quality, is that an ESCO project?
It is being approved as part of the McClure ESCO project phase two. It's all wrapped up into one.
All right, so where I see the 169 million for the cafeteria and the 823 million, yep. Whoa, 169,823,000, we cool, millions for the locker rooms and everything. Is there any guaranteed savings with energy there with them using it? Or should that actually actually go out by law after we've got the bid?
Well, under the ESCO project, you already did bid it. If it's included in your phase two ESCO project, it already falls under the, the bidding laws of ESCO. If you go out, if you go out for bid at this point in time, you won't meet the timeline to have it done this summer while they're already up there doing the work. And you would, you would then be going back in at a separate time to cut, you know, new holes in roofing that you just put on, to redo any, reset up a projection or project site. There's additional costs in increase in parts and materials. So I can't project if we were to go out and do a separate bid, what that would even look like at this point in time, because you're talking another six to eight weeks out. And the way that things are increasing cost-wise, I have no idea what that would mean for a timeline or cost project.
I just, actually, I really have a legal concern here. And I think we should check with our, with the attorney to make sure that this, this doesn't have to be bid.
I'm already, well, I already know it doesn't have to be bid because it's part of your ESCO project and that is the legal bidding process.
Yeah, when you do the ESCO project, it's right, because the idea is that you're saving money. Therefore, that's why it doesn't have to be bid out. I guess mine just keep coming back to the fact, are we saving money by doing these two projects? Is there an energy savings component to that that actually would make that ESCO? Because if there's not an energy saving component to it, then I don't think that falls under ESCO, if I understand it correctly. And trust, I tried to read it, that's true.
There is an energy savings component to this. This is the same as the, the other ESCO stuff that we're doing. It's just an expansion to the contract and it'll be part of each phase or each piece of this. They'll, they'll be able to show where that energy savings is. And I'll go back to what, kind of what Bo said there also. It's going to be a tough year to get some of the data that you want because a lot of this stuff I had shut down for, you know, a couple of months. Different pieces of it, some was on, some was off, based on the students, teachers and administrators who was in the buildings. We tried to just really keep it to a minimum when we could to try and save those dollars. So it's going to skew those numbers as Bo had kind of alluded to. But constantly looking at that and trying to see where we're going to be with it and we'll follow through with that with McClure. And I, I don't believe the 20-hour piece that you're, you're referring to for the lights is in this contract. We based it on average school days and some of those things when we talked about lighting, what the lighting loads and those things were. But Alyssa, we can ask Alyssa to answer any of those questions that you might have individually on that.
Like I said, Rob, my big concern is just making sure we're getting, we're actually getting the energy savings. And that, that there is no line somewhere buried in page 18 that gives somebody an out to where they sit, where they come back and tell us, well, you're wrong, you didn't do this or you didn't do that. That's just my concern.
Well, and.
I always look for those kind of things.
I'm pretty, pretty certain that not real long ago, they did, McClure's had done one of these ESCOs and they did end up paying because they didn't have the savings that were projected. And they have, there has been cases when they have paid out. It's not unheard of. And, you know, we'll continue to work through that to see if we have savings available there. We'll definitely take them. The ESCO is another tool that is kind of the same or along the lines of a design spec type program where we would do a traditional bid. It's just, it's a different way of doing it with the advantage of getting some of these savings in the end. But the, the overall cost, if we bid this versus them doing it this way, are very similar.
Okay. See, my last question, Jeff, I promise this is a much easier one.
Go ahead.
Much easier. Where are we with plans for replacing Liberty Garden?
Well, in the 10-year, on the 10-year plan, that's, that's out, I think, out on 2024, 22. I think it's 2024 is where it's.
We can't wait till 2024 to talk about it?
That, that, I got, and that's where I'm getting, I guess, I don't want to wait till 2024.
We're just not there yet.
And we have this S R money that could be put into general fund or construction fund possibly that instead of having to take out a bond or do something like that, it would be truly a good use of the money would be to say, we're building this, we're taking so much each year that we don't need for whatever else of emergency. Then put that money towards that school. And if we have an idea now, if we start working on that idea now, look at our number of kids. Have we seen a drop in that area? We know fifth grade's not there. So we don't need a big. So we don't need a biggest building. And I'm just thinking, as everybody said, the prices of rebuilding really keeps going up and up and up. It's probably not going to get any better for any time soon. Maybe we should be starting to talk about the curtain now. Just rough ideas, you know what I mean? Rough ideas, like what would it cost? And we're looking at 10 million, we're looking at 5 million.
I, I get real nervous when you think about Esser funds for, for building construction. I mean, there's.
Well, the Esser funds are taking the place of other funds.
Right.
Free up some other money possibly than that we could use towards that. And that's my logic. It's not saying it's the right logic.
It has, it has to be tied to the purpose for which the Esser funding came out. It's and this is all because it was through the various COVID relief acts last fall. Yeah, we, we, we can't, I mean, if we were to say that the Liberty Curtain building is inherently designed to promote the transmission of coronavirus, then perhaps we could make that argument, but.
Or, or the, the air quality is terrible and it's creating COVID.
Yeah.
I mean, but honestly, Randy, the, as far as I'm concerned and the way my take on it, and I think where Jackie's coming from is the main purpose of those funds are, is for remediation of the kids who have lost a lot of skills because of remote learning and being out of school and missing all of last spring. And I know she is, she's earmarked a good chunk of that money for that purpose. And I think that's, that should be our main focus of that, of that funding person.
That's fair.
And I think that was the main, main reasoning behind it.
May I, may I add a comment to that note? I would just ask that these, the types of conversations we have, Randy, I believe what you're talking about is reserving, committing reserve funds at the end of the year.
Yes.
So, so if there is a surplus at the end of this year or next year, as we work through the Esser funding in the next couple of years, then we have conversation on what buckets does that money get reserved or committed to be put towards in the out years?
You're putting that a lot better than I did, Susan. Thank you.
We definitely.
I'm going to give you credit again.
And that's two, three in use in a month, Randy.
I know, that's too much.
If, if I could just jump in real quick, thank you, Randy, for bringing this up. But I think the, the key thing that I think Randy's trying to say is that can we start the conversations now? Just so, you know, all of a sudden, it's not going to be like bam, you got to make a decision like tomorrow. So I think just talk, starting to talk about maybe the facilities meetings. Because there's a lot of things involved in this. That, that's, I'm, I'm completely support that. Let's get the conversation going.
And I think that was the whole purpose of having a 10 year facility plan is making sure, you know, it's not, it wasn't done once and it's set in stone for 10 years. It's something that is a living document. Because we've also, since we started this 10 year plan, have discovered some pretty serious items that never made the list. And so frequently and constantly updating that through the facilities group and the rest of the board as well. That's going to be a document that continues to evolve. And what's nice, which at least I think has been working really well, I'll say that is that a lot of the projects that we did allocate funds for have been coming in under budget, which allows us to adjust or add things that, you know, may have missed the list or gets other things done and trying to prioritize those pieces. And again, that's part, this long-term planning, the financial planning with the, the long-term budget forecasting as well as the 10 year plan is supposed to prevent us from getting to what you're fearing.
Yep.
And so we're just to, with the COVID stuff that has been going on, I've watched the enrollment numbers regularly, but again, this is an anomaly year. We certainly did not lose students this year to the rate that we were in previous years. So I still need to watch how is, how are those enrollment numbers actuals compared to the projected enrollments that were provided to us in the original study and continue to, to look forward to that. And there's a lot of really exciting conversations that can go on around this topic. So it's definitely on our radar. It's not forgotten. And it's just in, it's out in 2024, but you're right, you don't just all of a sudden either build a school or close a school. You have to do a lot of thoughtful planning, a lot of input and some decision making. So we are, it is on the radar.
It is, and, and I, you know, I think this, this 10 year plan has served us well to this point. And I think we have been able to do a lot of the things on there that we want to do. But yeah, you, you're right. I, I, I agree with you and I think that plus some other things on this that we need to continually discuss and as we upgrade things and, and things come up that we don't even have on here. But, you know, and that's the, the one thing I like about it is because we have been known as Keystone to kind of Band-Aid things forever and kick the can down the road. And I, I think this is keeping us focused on things that need to be done. And we have a plan now and we work through it. Things need to be bumped up or we need to stop that thing. So sure.
Thank you so much, Jeff. I just wanted to do a quick shout out to Susan and, and Rob. Their, their planning team and anyone else who was involved. So far, we've been through three major or four, if you include the artificial turf. Four major conceptual, all the way to build between the middle school, bucktail, artificial turf. To me personally, I think the cafeteria projects were done the best. I mean, to me, that was like the bar. The way they communicated everything, their timely meetings involving everyone, getting the students involved. And the way they chipped away at it logically. I, I just want to thank all of them. It made it so enjoyable. And we're all on the same page. We got chances to discuss things. They did a fantastic job and I'm so excited about these projects. They, they look really fun. Thank you so much.
Okay. Finance committee? Eric, sorry?
Yeah, I'm here. We, we haven't met since our, since our last board meeting. I think we meet next week.
Personnel?
Personnel committee met on March 15th. The discussion that happened in that meeting is considered executive session content, so I really can't say much about it. Just some things involving upcoming negotiations and other, other matters of, of interest.
Policy. Can somebody fill in for Wayne?
Guess I. The, as you see on the agenda tonight, there are several policies for first read. A lot of them have to do with facilities and or maintenance workplace safety and that kind of thing. We also have one on there and I'm not sure. I think Susan wanted to pull one of these. Did that, did that get taken off? Was the one on crowdfunding or something?
Right.
But there's, there's about, oh, there's eight policies here and I think there's one on the oath of office. One for title one for the comparability of services. There's a couple of minor changes in there from what we had before. Facilities planning, give some grants and donations. That one in great detail. I think we made some changes in these to update them based on some PSBA recommendations. And I think they're, they're in pretty good shape right now. So if you get a chance to look through these, go in the next week, these are first reads and they won't be up for vote till next month. So.
The first one, the bog that's on here, the Board Operating Guidelines, that was recommended based on PSBA's recommendation, but the rest are part of the routine policy review that we established in the policy committee for for updates and regular reviews and they all follow the PSBA recommended policies.
I think we're
On target.
Really, yeah, really on target. We're, we're making really good progress with, with these and we're, we're staying on pace. So I think by the time we're done with, it's human beings, we should have things.
We're coming along. There's a lot of planning in between for the administrative team to get together and look at those. Obviously whichever, whoever's involved in those types of policies and then get it to the policy committee for review. The policy committee has been on top of doing their homework prior to the meeting. So that helps those meetings go smoothly as well. So thank you to those folks for doing all the extra reading.
Yeah, I appreciate all the, all the prep that you guys do before, prior to our meeting, because it does make it make it a lot easier for us. So, thank you.
And safety and security. Roger?
We, we haven't had a meeting since our last board meeting. And we're scheduled to have one on April 14th. However, as always, these meetings are in exact due to the nature.
All right, thank you. So then our informational items, reports, we have their treasurer's report, our financials report and enrollment. Any board members have any questions or comments on those?
Only on the enrollment report, I would say that it's encouraging to see that our numbers are, are ticking up rather than ticking down. Means that we must be doing something right.
We also want to mention that Christina Manning and the counselors and the elementary principals have been working very hard to encourage and promote kindergarten registration and it was, has been thus far very successful. Numbers are higher than last year. And we still, it's, it is early and they're higher than last year. Great.
And one, one thing that kind of plays into these numbers, it could also increase them if, depending on what happens with the charter school legislation effect. Hopefully, it seems like we have a lot of steam behind it with so many of the districts.
Yeah, so anyone planning to go to the breakfast?
So if, if we could get some help there, we might return some students that way.
Especially from the cyber charters.
Should, right? If you, I would just looking at what we pay them every month. It's, it's crazy.
Because we have a perfectly good program that probably offers everything and not more than what they're getting on the cyber charters.
It, it, that's absolutely true.
I wish the parents would look at what we offer to realize that kids are offered so many choices. It, it's crazy to me, the amount of classes they could have.
I'm hoping once this COVID stuff, you know, calms down, the next school year, some of these people that opted just opted for a charter school out there will come back. Not, you know, even if nothing else happened with the charter legislation.
I, I feel like it's to the district's credit that we have our own cyber option there. Because there are other districts out there that don't have it. And there are some children who have different aptitudes for learning in different settings. And the districts that don't have their own cyber program are, are certainly doing their students disservice for not being able to offer that up as an option.
In some uses, our, our virtual academy has very high quality curriculum in it. And in some cases, the cyber charters that folks are choosing has the exact same vendors. So it's a.
I don't understand why not use your local, where you can still participate in the sports and everything else. I don't understand mindset.
Yeah, so and, and we provide some, we provide additional support for our virtual academy students. I believe then, then cybers do as well. So we'll continue to promote that. And I do think that some of our efforts with communication and the efforts that we're working towards with branding the school district and the communications that will be coming forward will all be helpful in continuing to make Keystone Central the school of choice for more and more kids every day.
Look at the CTC program. Look at everything we offer. They're not going to get that at any cyber charter school.
No.
Or any charter school for that matter.
No, they're not. And charters, charter schools do not provide career and technical education. Nor are they required to. However, the funding, you just triggered me. Includes our CTC costs, which is completely unfair. Please talk to your legislators about the unfair charter funding formula.
I haven't heard that before.
Nice trigger. So for October, for our board meetings, the first Thursday in October, I believe Bucktail has scheduled their annual bonfire. Yeah, and they have homecoming events that weekend. Since Fleming foliage was set, Mr. Hall has been working to align Bucktail's homecoming with Fleming foliage weekend, which was recommended by several of folks in that area. And on the Thursday night of that week is some traditional events which would be held at the same time as our board meeting. So just want to know what the board members believe we should do. If we feel that's a meeting conflict, should we look at a reschedule or something of that nature?
I think it would be a good idea for us to look at rescheduling that. Just so, I mean, we want to be able to give the Bucktail area the ability to do the things that they want to do and keep their traditions going.
I know that we probably have to do this next week in establishing our meeting calendar. I'm, I'm not sure if it requires an official motion or action of the board, but I would propose pushing October board meetings by a week each.
Yeah, so our work session would be October 14th and our voting session would be October 21st.
Would we plan on having it up there like usual or here?
We discussed, I think with the new board room and with everything else on Zoom, we weren't going up there in October. We need to haul the Zoom equipment.
Okay.
So, yeah, so we'll still be here. Does that require board action, Tracy? The board approve their official calendar in December?
Yeah, I believe we did.
Yeah, so I would just also make a suggestion that, that the rest of the, the board also review the, the remaining 20, 2021 calendar date, board dates. So if there are any other conflicts, we may be able to take care of that altogether. We don't have to take action next week, but we just, we became aware of the conflict recently and wanted to bring it to your attention. All right, next on the agenda are the eight policies on first read that Jeff spoke about. So our members want to look over them. If you have any questions, contact the policy committee. And we can hash that out before voting on them.
One, one comment on policy 701 listed as facilities planning. I would encourage everyone to read that one because the title is a bit deceptive as to what that policy is actually about. One statement in there is the board shall continuously or annually conduct census of all children from birth to 18 years old living in the district. I didn't realize that we did that.
Did we do that?
Yes, of all children from birth to 18 years old.
I don't believe that. At least I have not done one. I can't speak for those before me.
So, so, so in any case, this, this one, it needs, it needs to be looked at. We, we do have some populations within our district that might not be open to such a census.
That's true.
And minutes for the previous committee meetings and last month's work session and voting session. Any comments from the board on those? All right, so then we get into our bills. April, list of bills for April's on there. So the total amount for this is $2,889,127.67. Then the next agreement is the final site, which is the new webpage Dr. Martin talked about. I'm, I'm just want to give Chad a little bit of an opportunity to talk here and give you a little bit of an idea about that. While Chad, while you're getting that up and sharing your screen. Thank you for messaging me. The conflict, there's a conflict in October if we just bump those meeting dates because then we run into what we are tentatively planning as a joint homecoming with Lock Haven University, which Bucktail would also participate in along with Central Mountain. And that would, that Thursday night would be our homecoming parade, the 21st.
Okay, in, in light of that, I'd like to make the proposal that we have a combined work and voting meeting on the second Thursday of October. Okay, in, in light of that, I'd like to make the proposal that we have a combined work and voting meeting on the second Thursday of October.
Don't normally like to combine work sessions and voting sessions, but we may not have an option that month.
Yeah.
And anything contentious, we'll just have to pull from the voting session if we need more information. We can try to get everyone, we can try to get, so we're saying that would be on the seventh, fourteen, on the fourteen. So what we could do is we can make sure that that work session agenda is live for you at least two weeks prior to the summer. All right. Have a look by the first. Since you got that, October one live agenda. Chad, you ready to go?
Ready when you are. All right, so I, I just kind of wanted to, to give a little bit of information and, and some reasoning for us looking into a new website. So anyone that actually has looked at our website can see that there are a few, there are a few shortcomings to it. It, it can get disorganized. Some of the access to it is a little, is a little strenuous at times. And the overall user, user friendliness of that site is sketchy at best. So we feel it's really important to, for us to look at ways that we can improve on our district communication. The way that, you know, just the way that we're presenting ourselves to the public and getting our information out so that, you know, they, you know, the public can stay informed. Just to kind of, to give us a little bit better of a public eye. So essentially what you see here is the, the website that Dr. Martin sent out this morning. So really what I wanted to show was this is more or less an example of what our site will eventually turn into. Now, of course, we won't be Stevenson, we'll be Keystone Center School District, but, um, so, you know, they'll be greeted with an image of, of our district, something that's really going to kind of catch their eye, that's going to be friendly, that's going to be welcoming to them as they visit our site. And as you scroll down, you can see that, that there's a much more defined and readable version of upcoming events within the district. You know, you see that little bit of a, of a, a phase in effect there, which is, you know, that's just aesthetically pleasing. So, and then this is just something that they have on their site for student enrollment and, and information. That can essentially be turned into anything, something that we feel that the public needs to stay informed on. So that's a, that's a huge feature of this site. We will definitely be taking part of this, you know, videos that the students make, sport, you know, highlights of sporting events, things like that, that, that will be important for the public, just kind of fun things to get out there for that. And then down at the bottom, it actually integrates fully into social media. So our Facebook feed, our, our Twitter feed, all of that will be actually updatable and viewable from our home website, just to kind of keep that social media and that interaction going through, throughout the public. A couple of the key factors that we were looking at as we were kind of looking around, we were searching for a new site, was our, our ability to, to push out updates to the public. As of right now, you know, we're using our, our alert system, this, this website actually allows us to create and distribute a, a public facing dedicated mobile application that anyone can get a hold of. And then anytime that we would actually want to push out an update, we can push it out for snow days, we can push it out for announcements. You know, any, anything that we want to kind of disperse out to the public and get that out there quickly, we can actually push that out through that app. And anyone that has it installed will get that, will get that information right away. They'll get an alert on their phone, they'll get an alert on their laptop, you know, however they have it, however they have their notifications set up, which is a huge improvement from where we sit today. Another big improvement that this website offer us, offers us is ADA complacency. Our current site is ADA compliant. This, this site essentially steps it up a notch. Where they actually provide a service that, essentially it keeps an eye on our, on our pages. So any new pages coming up, our existing pages that we would transition in from, from where we are now, they take a look at all of the text, they take a look at all of the photos. They take a look at essentially every component that, that our website would consist of and ensure that it is one ADA compliant and accessible to those that would need those additional steps to actually view and interact with our site. So I actually, I actually really like the fact that it's not a one and done kind of a thing, you know, you buy the site and it, you know, they, they make sure that everything you have right now is compliant and everybody's good. I like the fact that they actually keep an eye on that after the fact, so that anything that we would throw up, they make sure that there's alternative text on their, on our photographs. They make sure that a screen reader, which is actually included with the site, is able to take that page and essentially read it to someone that would require that. That's, that was really important and I, I feel like that's a huge asset to the district. Another, another functionality that is really nice for this is for our ESL community. It actually offers us the ability to completely revamp the site for whatever that, whatever that individual would require. So right out of the box, it essentially gives us three languages that we can transition into. So taking, you know, Spanish speaking, for example, there's actually a box on the top that allows them to completely transition that page into Spanish. So and then everything after that is, is then converted into Spanish for their convenience and for their functionality, which was, which was a really nice feature. Overall, just the, the, the additions and the improvements that, that this new website would bring into the district is going to give us a step up again, to our communication into the, into the public, to our communication in the district. And it, it will overall just present a more professional and functional image to everyone that, that comes to visit it.
Looks nice, Chad.
Thank you. I'm excited. It's, it's going to be, it's going to be really nice.
Well, transparency is more expensive than what we have been paying by approximately fifteen thousand dollars annually. However, it's not apples to apples. It also provides all those extra features that we're not currently paying for, which we are supposed to be doing.
I can see the price difference.
Did you say Williams Sport, School District uses this thing? I'm not sure if Williams Sport does. I sent the board members in my weekly update that I sent out around five thirty today, five thirty this evening. I included the link to what Chad was showing you, so if you wanted to go and explore some of the other districts besides Stevenson. Stevenson's actually the most celebrated high school in the nation. And like Stevenson, it's actually the school that we went and visited a little over a year ago. And so I, I didn't realize that they were one of the, the users of that, but that impressed me as well.
Could I just add something real quick? I, I am super excited about this. We all know the website, due to no one's fault, we're not going to look at the history. I, I did, thank you so much, Dr. Martin, for sending that out. I checked out their website and whoever picked this group, if you picked them, thank you so much. This is going to be a huge, huge step, huge, and we're all real excited about this. The only concern that, you know, just keep us informed, like, obviously, this is going to, there's going to have to be a timeline, so you have less disruption. I'm sure, I have no doubt that you're going to do whatever it takes so there isn't. But the sooner we can get this done, the, the better as far as I'm concerned. And thank you all so much. I'm really, we're all really excited about this.
Our, our goal is honor about July one to switch over, but the reason we're asking you to approve this contract is so that Chad can begin that process. It does not happen quickly. It, it's a longer process, so that's why we would ask for your approval in April. Thank you. Thanks, Chad. Next is an agreement with RC Bowman to do the storm sewer work up at this, up at Bucktail, something that needs done desperately up there. And then the next one is the Resolute for the bats at Central Mountain High School and the middle school that we can no longer recondition and then need replaced. And then the next is the field goal replacements that Jeff talked about also up at Bucktail, so to make them PI double A compliant. And then, um, continued projects at Bucktail for the ESCO project with McClure. Again, not to exceed four million eighty two thousand five hundred nineteen dollars and that's paid for by the twenty twenty bond issuance. Any questions so far? You all still with me? And then the next is for an agreement with ESS Northeast for substitute services that's paid for by the general fund.
Yeah, let's discuss that one.
Okay. You have a question?
Well, Mark and Tracy are going to want to kill me.
Okay.
Wouldn't it make more sense for us, and Susan, you can chime in here and tell me that, yes, it would make no sense to do it, but it would cost us more on our own to have our subs back again as opposed to use ESS. They don't seem to be doing much worse this year. We don't have any subs.
I, I'll start, Randy. One of the things that ESS is experiencing is an extreme sub shortage. So on a typical year, they have about over a hundred and fifty subs in the queue to serve the region, and this year they have sixty five. So they're short from the beginning. There's a lot of retirees who were very concerned about subbing in, during COVID. And we have been working closely, Mark and Tracy both have met with ESS to say, you either have to do better or we're not using you. And they had a very frank meeting with that group. And we have gotten some assurance of customer service to where they're actually placing an employee on site with us. So we have, Mark and Susan and I have discussed the possibility of going away from ESS. But at this point in time, we'd like to give it another go, as I, as I would, you know, as they say, and see that now that they're giving us some special attention and having somebody physically on site, we believe that we'll get more of the attention we're seeking.
I, I can add that, I think one of the reasons why we have ESS is because of our retirees that sub for us, which is a pretty significant number. There's not a, a Peasars issue for those subs.
Probably eaten up with, okay.
Yeah, and quite honestly, to do it in-house, I mean, again, we've kicked this around. I, I just don't think we could do it for that. At that price, and, and as Dr. Martin mentioned, I think the biggest thing for us, I know Trace and I met with, with the representatives, is having somebody here on site that, when we have people coming into the building to apply for ESS, there's someone there to work with them and walk them through that process. And on any given day, a big thing for us was if they're short subs, they're going to be there calling, you know, people on the list to be able to see if they can come in for us. Rather than calling back either the building principals or to Trace and I and try and track that down every day with the, the volume that we're dealing with.
I was just curious, so, it's one of those curiosity questions. I've looked at it. You do know they're charging us five dollars extra for a retired teacher?
Because we pay them more.
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 I know, but I mean, they actually still, if you look at pay difference, they still increase what they charge us by five additional dollars. I'm just curious, it was one of those numbers that popped up, I mean, I, I couldn't see the logic. I saw the logic of it, we, if we pay that retired teacher fifteen dollars more, then our cost would go up fifteen dollars, you think, you'd think it would match? It doesn't, actually goes up almost twenty dollars. Weird. I'm a numbers person.
Percentage thing. And something we can ask them why that's in there, we can get an answer to that.
Or mine, I'll give you some really scary information when we're done.
Unlike surprises.
Also a surprise, it just would scare you.
Okay. And then next is the repairs to the Central Mountain Track by Keystone Sports Construction. And that will not exceed forty one hundred dollars paid up by the capital fund. Any questions on that?
That seems really, really low for a track.
Whiles repair, not just like it's. It's patchy.
Still darn cheap.
Well, it's because we don't want to put a lot into that because we know we're going to have a bigger ticket item coming down the road.
I'm not complaining though.
And then the last two items under business are a taxpayer appeal and a taxpayer settlement, which are executive, executive issues. So we'll move on to personnel, different leave of absences, one retirement, I believe. Anything there? And then under athletics, they have approval for several volunteers and game workers. Student workers and one resignation there. So then there's a couple of things under negotiations, an MOU retirement date extension. And then also an MOU for PSP Rockview, that was what, just because of a name change? Yeah, the, the individual at Rockview changed and they sent us a new MOU with new name on it. There's no change in the content. We just felt that it would be prudent to take the, the step of board approval with the new correct information, our correct name on it.
Is there a requirement for it to actually be a named individual there rather than, rather than a particular position?
That's typically what's been on the MOUs that I've seen, even from with universities or whatever, it's the person who's responsible with, for the organization at the time. This was at their request, not our request, so.
We have Reno Police, we actually had to prove the officers, not the police department. So they had a new officer, then we'd have to prove the new officer. So that, it might be something to do with that.
So that brings us to the end. I did fail to mention at the beginning of the meeting, an executive session was held this evening from six oh two to six thirty five PM. So this is, anyone from the board have anything else?
President Tracy. I'm not sure what committee or if, if the administration or who, who would talk, discuss this, but, or maybe Bo has the answer or Chad. How many buildings don't have fiber optics to them yet?
Uh, every building is on a leased service right now. With the exception of, we do have private fiber runs at the middle school complex running from the middle school to the elementary school, the property services building. We also have privately owned fiber in the Bucktail campus, going from the Bucktail High School to the Reno Elementary School. Everything else is of such a distance that constructing our own fiber would be very cost prohibitive. It would require a very large capital investment upfront. And it's far more effective to either lease those, lease those services through a third-party service provider or enter into a, an irrevocable cost sharing agreement or something like that. And I, I don't know when our contract is up. Chad could probably say when our contract is up for our, our leased circuits right now, but I mean, every, every building has more than adequate connectivity.
I believe our lease is either up, I believe it's either next year or the year after. I think we're in year, I think we're in year three of five.
I think we did it two years ago.
Yep.
The reason why I'm bringing this up is, I'm sure everyone's been reading it. There, between Penn State and the studies they're doing and what the federal government's trying to do and the legislator and COVID money and duh, 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 duh. Anyways, it seems to be on the radar a lot more. And I'm just like, Cetacog, they're, they're working on it. We have all these little bits and pieces, you know, everywhere. I was just thinking if the board in cooperation with administration, if somehow we could, I don't know what committee it would be, but start the conversation with these other entities. Because maybe even the people that live near our buildings might benefit.
Yeah, that's, that's.
I don't know.
With, you know, we've, we've had folks from the county of Cetacog reach out to us in terms of whether we have a need there. If the pricing would be more attractive than what we're doing right now, especially in the Reno area, it could be something to look at, but we don't know what that's going to look like. I would expect that any build that's being done there is probably being done by one of the incumbents, which would either be Comcast or, or Verizon. I don't know, too many other companies are getting into running fiber around, at least not, not in that type of rural setting. But, I mean, we have, we have as much speed as we're willing to pay for. I'll, I'll put it that way.
Oh, no, I appreciate that. I'm just saying, what committee would it be? I mean, I'd like, me personally, I would love for the district in some capacity. I mean, I'd like, me personally, I would love for the district in some capacity to be directly involved with those conversations. Because we shouldn't, just so we're ready, we're ready, that we're at the table, they know we're here.
Elizabeth, just to jump in real quick, we did just have communication with Angela Harding through CEDOC. We've been connecting with them on their project. Chad and Bo are both involved. Chad was just getting some answers back to them about their project in Bucktail. So they, those conversations are happening, we can add them to the finance committee or the facilities committee, whichever one the board feels is more appropriate.
You want more, Chad, you want more, don't you?
I have no fear, Elizabeth, we are going to be on top of any opportunity that we get to have our own fiber. So we can control our data speeds. So no worries there, we're on, we're on it.
I mean, I mean, if somebody wanted to, you know, go ahead and just give us 30 million that we could build our own dark fiber and lease all permits and everything. That would be absolutely wonderful, I don't think that's going to happen, but it's.
Never say never.
Never say never, that's right.
That's me, you never know, options are out there, grant money might come up all of a sudden boom, you know. So what committee does, do you, do you folks want it to be on?
Well, I, I feel like facilities is loaded. They are really loaded, but I, so I would maybe prefer finance committee.
We could always spin up a, an ad hoc.
I feel like finance could take that on because that's really long-term financial. And we do also have a, a technology plan, which that technology plan is directly tied to financial. What years is the technology going to cost us more money? And so for me, it makes sense to rope it all there. Yeah, Roger, you win.
What?
Are you spying? No, Eric, oh Eric, you're the lucky winner. Shorts on.
Thank you all very much, I'm really excited, I mean, I just have a really good feeling about that. Simply because I, I had a problem with internet here and it just happens to be that a carrier came to the house and he explained so much to me. But I mean, I thought I knew a little bit, but it blew my mind that there's all these little secrets and stuff that these, these gentlemen, the technicians except know. So anyways, it made me so excited, so thank you for listening and coming up with this, I appreciate it, thank you. Looking forward to seeing where this goes.
President, if I could just give one more reminder to board members, we did hear the Shugrally Charter School presentation last month. And we, our charter ad hoc will be needed soon.
More than likely next Wednesday, I think.
It's Wednesday, so we really need input from the board members on questions you have or feedback that you have so that we can prepare a response or a request for additional information.
I had a quick question about that. I mean, I would feel more comfortable if we were all together discussing it versus me just like typing a question out there that maybe was already discussed. I'd be wasting my time, I'd be wasting someone else's time. Is there anyone there, any of the board members or administration maybe want to get together for an hour? And I don't know if you have to publicize it, instead of just shooting emails back and forth and back and forth?
Well, I, I think I would caution that we are limited, limited to quorum capacities unless we want to publicize this as a, a public meeting of the board and invite the public to it. Not that I'm against that, but I don't think the timing is appropriate.
Probably emails, Elizabeth, would be your best bet, just have an open email or anybody puts their questions. And you can read, if you read everybody else's questions, you know, if that, before you put yours in, sorry, but ask. That might be the easiest way.
And if you want, we could even spin up a Google Doc and share it with everyone. You can just, you can type your questions and stuff in there and we can, we can coordinate what, what our ask is going to be that way.
That would be really helpful to some, someone or some entity, just to set up a guide for us. You know, like folks, keep us focused on what we should really be concentrating on so we can get it done the best and fastest we can. That really be appreciated.
Well, I think the focus there is going to be, you know, just anything that came out of their presentation or materials that you want more clarification on. Or in terms of the targets that were established and the progress they're making towards meeting them. In case that wasn't fully fleshed out. So, I mean, it really is just an opportunity for you to ask anything that you would like for us to convey over to the Charter School Administration and their Board of Trustees. That's, that's why I suggested a Google Doc, so you can be as verbose as you'd like to be.
President Tracy, President Tracy.
Yes, Mr. Elling.
Hey, I, I'd just like to do a quick shout out here. Um, I'd like to give kudos to Rob, Susan and Rhonda Phillips for, and their entire team for the extraordinary effort in dealing with the preparations for the sale of Dicky. It was actually a very tough day for me in particular when Dicky was sold, because that is my alma mater. Okay, that's where I graduated. I had a lot of fond memories from there, you know. And, you know, I just wanted to thank them for doing a great job. I think they really did a bang up job on that. Also, I'd like to give a shout out to Dr. Martin's administrative team. Because I've been hearing quite a bit about how some of the administrators are actually stepping up and filling in to some positions when we have no substitutes. Where they are actually going in and filling those positions. So, um, I think that they deserve a shout out also because they are going above and beyond what their job descriptions are saying. So with that, I'd like to thank everybody for a great job that they're doing.
Thanks, Roger. All right. On behalf of the admin team, Roger, they, they would sincerely appreciate that. I know some of them are on this meeting tonight and heard you directly. I get sometimes recess selfies from some of the admin team. And they have really stepped up and pushed in to help. And we, we are in dire straits with substitutes. You'll see on the agenda, personnel agenda, we are adding some day-to-day subs. As students from L H U and Penn State have been coming forward to help out with the process. But please continue to spread the word that we're looking for substitutes. Anybody have anything else?
I'll make a motion.
I mean, you have to be the second.
All right, I'll second it. Lucky I'm not there, otherwise I would have got it.
Meeting adjourned, thank you, everyone.
Night, everybody.
Night, thank you.